Okay, now we can sit you with your dual Wi-Fi. Oh my God. They can't interact.
Okay.
All righty, we're back in the record. This is the Board of Stand-in for Appeals Public Review Session for May 23rd, 2017. Zoning calendar, new cases, item number one, 2015 BZ, 461 Avenue X, Brooklyn. Mr. Levkovitz?
Hi, good afternoon. Alexandra Levkovitz, on behalf of the applicant, 461 Avenue X. I understand that we had another issue this time around with sending the notices. We would like to request adjournment, obviously. Now, it wasn't the fault of my client, so if possible, if we can get a date as soon as possible that's available to the board, and we'll make sure that we'll be fully prepped for the next appearance.
Right, but I don't understand what your problem is with giving the proper notice. Do you understand what the rules are? You have to notify neighbors within?
I fully understand there was an issue on our end. We understand that we need to, we understand the way it has to be done, we understand that it has to be done with the proper amount of time in advance, and that's, it's not going to be an issue anymore.
There's not, I mean, our calendar is really full until the end of July, right?
Yeah, if any possible way to give us a date as soon as possible.
As soon as possible is July 25th.
Do you have maybe available the week prior to that?
No, right? Didn't we just?
Yeah, the rest of the season is.
Yeah, July 25th is the earliest. We've already postponed this for failure to give notice once before. That was in March.
No, I understand.
So, you know.
If there's any way to split us into July 13 date.
There isn't. So July 25th is the earliest we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, and notice does have to be given, it needs to be given in 20 days in advance of the hearing.
Right, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, the next case, please recall, item number three, 2016 4262 BZ, 271 East 29th Street, Brooklyn.
Thank you for hearing this application before the others. We did review your, attended your review session yesterday, and you had two questions about, substantive questions, and then you had a comment about the letter from both property owner. The first question was, you were talking about the survey and the yards at being at four foot nine and nine feet. We did correct the plans overnight, we'll submit them after the hearing. The house is slightly irregular, and some of the siding is thicker at some points than in others, so that inch discrepancy that you're seeing is due to the house changing configuration as it goes through.
But the survey is what controls.
Right, and we are changing, the survey is eight foot nine and three foot nine, and we're changing the plans to match the survey.
It's 3.9.
Excuse me.
Yeah, yeah, so that's the other thing, that's, if you're going to convert to inches, then make sure it's inches.
Yes, it's in inches.
Right.
We'll take care of that, and the architect actually already made that note. He also put a note on the plans to show that the chimneys are permitted obstruction.
Okay, good.
With respect to the neighbor's window, the neighbor's comments, I'm sure you've had a chance to take a look at where that neighbor is situated. He fronts on Quinton Road. I have a little, I drew a diagram here. I apologize. I appreciate that of the others.
Oh, so it's the neighbor with the rear facing the side?
I just wanted to be all professional, actually. So now that you understand where he is situated, he had a question about the air conditioning units. Our clients agreed, and we'll show you that on the plan, to place those units 25 feet away from their property line, basically in this, almost in the center of our property, up against the back of the property, and with, it's up against the commercial portion, where the commercial lets us to the rear. They also had questions about the kitchen exhaust.
So it's 25 feet from the property?
Twenty, it'll be 25 feet from the prop, it's.
From the side?
The AC units will be located 20, excuse me, 20 feet from the side property line. 20 feet.
20 from the side.
From the side property line.
Which side is that?
From the neighbor's side, whatever side they're on, if you're looking, I guess it'd be.
Adjacent to lot 45, does that make sense?
I don't have his lot.
45, there's 47 on the corner and 45.
We'll describe it in our narrative, I just don't have it open in front of me, but we'll be 20 feet from his property line.
Okay.
And the other comment that was made was the kitchen exhaust, the neighbor was concerned about the exhaust, our kitchen is on the other side of the property, it's not on that neighbor's side, and you have the plans to show that, and we'll include that in our next submission.
That the kitchen exhaust is on the other side.
And the adjacent neighbor was concerned that we're putting a big window that's going to face them, and asked if we could have put up a fence. Our client was not planning on putting up any fencing.
Is, is fine to put up, I don't know.
Our client is not planning on putting up any fencing. The neighbor had asked, now that we're putting in a window that's facing their yard, they had asked if we could put up fencing. Our clients, yeah, I didn't think you'd want to get involved, but our client has no.
Sometimes fences build good neighbors.
Yeah, it's whatever they decide amongst themselves, but we're not proposing that to the board. So we will revise the plans to reflect everything that we just said, we actually have them here, but they're handwritten notes, so we want to get them typed up, and whenever you deem it acceptable.
So I'm just looking, so the notes that you're going to be putting on are?
The chimney note.
The chimney note.
And we're going to fix the plans to reflect eight foot nine and three foot nine, to reflect the survey.
3.9.
3.8.9 and 3.9 feet.
Yeah, okay.
Not in inches feet.
Yes.
If we make it inches, we'll convert it.
Okay. All right, so, are there any speakers on this? Did that neighbor come? Okay, so, all right, any other comments from commissioners? No, it's too bad that those corrections weren't made, because already, but.
Well, I have them handwritten.
You do?
Yeah, the board will accept the handwritten notes, I just didn't know.
In the old days, the board only accepted handwritten, because they hadn't invented CAD graphic systems yet. 8.9 and 3.9, and on the drawings.
There's a note for the chimney, if you could, if you could.
3.9, oh, I see, it widens to four, it's, that's probably even bigger than.
It widens to go back, so that's why he noted it like that.
The sign and seal, what?
That's all right, that's fine, I'm glad you checked, thank you.
If you go to drawing.
No, of course, we're not going to.
A001 has the note for the chimney, with the permitted obstruction.
And it shows, oh, so the drawings currently show the AC unit, oh, this is the existing, sorry, sorry. So that agreement with your neighbor about the air conditioners, your agreement with your ne, their agreement with your neighbor, we don't usually get involved in where the AC unit goes, right? So.
No, but he did put, he did put it on the site line, too. A very good page, he put the AC unit on. Put a note, A001, he drew this mention at 20 feet.
Okay, that's fine, great. I don't see why we can't accept these plans, there's, consider the plans submitted at the hearing, right? They just get scanned online.
Thank you.
Right.
I'm sure the homeowner will be happy, thank you very much.
Okay. Yeah, okay, so in that case, I'd like to make, because we talked about this yesterday, it's a very modest proposal, and in keeping with the FAR lot coverage in the neighborhood, and it's only one story, we're your addition, which is far less than we often see. So, okay, so on that note, I'd like to make a motion to close. Chair for a matter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
And a motion to grant. Chair for a matter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is item number five, 2016 4262 BZ, 279 Church Street, Manhattan.
We're taking out a order. I'm sorry, that's the last one.
Yeah, that's the PCE.
Good afternoon, Neil Weisspart.
Wait, wait, one second. Okay, founded.
Hi, good afternoon, Neil Weisspart, on behalf of Lyons Den. I attended review session yesterday, and I have a copy of the community board, you have an approval, the application. The second comment was regarding the fire alarm, and we will install the fire alarm as soon as possible on both the second and third floors. Spoke to the architect, said it'll take about a week to install, so hopefully have it in within the next few weeks.
Sorry.
The other comment was about all the violations and the stop.
What about the sprinklers?
The sprinklers have been installed and signed off. There have been certain sprinklers that were relocated on the second and third floor for, over the shower areas, so we understand that DOB will not approve that until we get our BSA approval. I have the architect here to answer any questions about the filings at DOV, if you'd like to ask him some questions.
So the sprinklers have been, what, they've been installed and signed off, but?
Originally, the, that stop work order was issued because there was no sprinkler in the building, they installed sprinklers in the hallway and through the entire building, even the bakery on the first floor had sprinklers installed and was signed off. However, some sprinkler heads were relocated over the shower areas in the PCE, and that cannot be signed off until BSA approves the application.
So you submitted revised plans.
The sprinklers.
No.
Installed, it's not signed off.
Correct.
That's an important distinction.
Yeah, yeah, right. So throughout the PCE.
Let me bring up Steve Wiegota.
Yeah, sprinklers.
Sorry.
Just to say, the architect will respond. Please state your name to the record.
Shlomo Steve Wiegota. And so, we filed, the main building sprinkler systems are signed off, we filed a separate sprinkler application to amend relocating several sprinkler heads over the showers. That application is in a disapproved status, awaiting BSA approval, the examiner will not approve it until the BSA gets, we need a copy of a BSA approval to allow sprinklers related to showers that are shown on that plan.
Okay, all right, and then, so the fire alarm system, though, needs to be, because this is a legalization, we always have the fire alarms installed first and then inspected?
Understood.
So especially in a building like this, where there really needs to be fire alarms, right? Okay, and then, so the vacate order, that's something left over?
Yes, that was unrelated to the yoga use, it was from a daycare center on the second floor, and I believe because it wasn't sprinkled, so they required 24-hour fire guards, and then the building was fully sprinkled, and the fire guards were removed.
When you have the vacate order on the fifth floor?
That's, that's, should be rescinded once we follow through with this application.
Let me address that. So there's a, Steve again, a fairly complicated building, the fifth floor is an IMD, it's a loft floor, it's one floor that's an IMD, fourth floor is residential, our spaces are second and third, where the yoga studio, the ground floor and cellar are, is a bakery. All of it has been approved, so the fifth floor is occupied by an IMD tenant, and that, we're awaiting that tenant to file through his own architect, to file some renovations, skylights, whatever the loft board required, so we're not, you know, we can't control what that fifth floor does.
I do need to make one important point, the second, this was originally just a legalization for the third floor, the second floor is now in use as well, so this is a full legalization application.
That's okay. Okay, all right, so then, are there any speakers on this? Okay, of both the second and the third floors?
Yeah.
Just one about the sign.
The burlesque sign.
Yeah, why are you keeping the sign?
Landmark says requested that it remain, and if we are to change our sign, they want it in that same font.
Oh.
So, I know it's kind of strange, but that's what I've been told.
You know, we just don't have enough remnants of the old New York, right, in terms of signage. Okay, so, because we need to wait until we get this fire alarm installed, we can't close this, so you need to come back once fire alarm is installed and inspected, or at least scheduled for inspection by the part, fire department, and fire department typically says, as long as we see you scheduled us for inspection, we're okay, because now fire department is in the system.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, a few weeks, so that puts us.
How long do you think we could have it installed and schedule inspection schedule for the fire alarm?
Right, so it'll take us a couple of weeks to file. FDNY typically will take one or two or three weeks to approve. Just for the record, there's a fire alarm, partial fire alarm system on the first floor and cellar, that's, so, and then, once the installation occurs, so I would say within a month to two is when I would probably expect FDNY to come and do the inspection.
Okay, so that puts us kind of inspection ready at the end of July, right? Right? So then, why don't we say first week of August? How about that? For a continued hearing, okay? August 8th for the continued hearing, and if you can, submit your materials on July 19. And the reason I say if you can, because the, this, the sign off from fire department could really be the day before the hearing, okay?
Right, well, and as long as they have it, the inspection schedule.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Should have installed by July 19th, no problem.
Installed and have filed for inspection.
And request inspection.
Yeah, right, great, thank you. Okay.
And the burlesque sign.
You believe?
This location has got a nice history.
Okay.
So it's land, it got landmarked, so it has to stay.
Okay, we heard.
This building has some history.
Love to hear it over other situations.
Sounds like it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank. Number two?
We're done with that?
Okay.
Item number two, 2016 4176 BZ, 7804, 31st Avenue, Queens.
Good afternoon, Josh Reinschmidt of Bakerman LLP, appearing today on behalf of the Islamic Center of Jackson Heights. I'd like to just do a brief overview of the site, the existing building, and our proposal, and then I think it'd be helpful to walk through some of the plans, to explain the program, I know there were a number of questions regarding that layout, so I'll cover that, and then answer some additional issues that were raised at yesterday's hearing. The subject site is located within our fourth district on a relatively narrow corner lot at the intersection of 78th Street and 31st Avenue. Lot has 89 feet of frontage on 78th Street, and approximately 38 feet of frontage on 31st Avenue. Site's improved with an existing two-story and basement building that was originally constructed in 1930s as a two-family residence. The Islamic Center of Jackson Heights purchased the property in 2001 and converted the basement and first floor to house of worship uses, which at the time was sufficient to accommodate the program of needs of the congregation, they had only had approximately 20 members. Since that time, over the last 15 to 16 years, the South Asian population in the immediate vicinity has increased significantly, and the congregation now has approximately 200 members. And the existing building, for a variety of reasons that were outlined in our application, cannot accommodate this growth currently, the busiest services are on Fridays and on the high holidays, and members of the congregation have to pray outside. Speakers are actually set up, so the members can hear the Imam sermon, and I think that actually contributes to some of the complaints that the neighbors had submitted to the board with respect to noise. In addition, I think it significantly contributes to some of the pedestrian, pedestrian congestion that had been complained about. The applicant, in order to meet the needs of its congregation, proposes to demolish the existing building and construct in a new house of worship that will have approximately 6,200 square feet of floor area, it'll be three stories and a cellar, and will be fully compliant with all the bulk regulations but for two front yard waivers. On 31st Avenue, we're going to propose a 10-foot front yard, 15 is required, and 78th Street, we're proposing a five-foot front yard, let's say another 15-foot yard is required. Along our eastern lot line, we're proposing a five-foot side yard, eight feet is required, and on the property's southern lot line, we're not providing a front, I'm sorry, a side yard at grade, so that, actually, there's no side yard at all, but above the first story, the building will be set back and comply with the yard regulations. As I believe was mentioned yesterday at the executive review session, the parking requirement under zoning is based off of the largest room of assembly for a house of worship, which in this instance would be our cellar level. It's actually, the cellar level's going to be a combined women's prayer room, as well as where, it'll also be a multipurpose room where wedding ceremonies, funeral services are held, as well as religious instruction on the weekends. But that is the largest room of assembly, it has 99, a 99 occupancy load, which is based off of non-fixed seating, and so.
It's 15 square feet.
Correct.
So that would be?
I'm sorry.
That's table seating.
Yeah, that's table and chairs.
Table and chair, because that's lar, you know, so, that's part of the operational questions we have, it's, for instance, if there's a wedding, and there's a party downstairs for the wedding, is that, is that everyone standing, and therefore 15 square feet isn't enough for a crowd like that?
I don't believe there's actually parties held in the cellar, it is really just the service that would be held, I would ask members of the congregation to get up and speak to that in, in one minute.
Okay.
Regarding the occupancy load, for chairs that are not fixed, it's usually, like, say on the first floor, it's usually seven square feet?
I will.
And they use 15? Seven per person?
Sure.
So, and all of the plans say that DOB will determine the occupancy, but what if DOB says, well, seven square feet per person is more appropriate?
So is the architect here, bud?
The architect couldn't make it today, but what I'd like to do is have them, I think they've actually reviewed the plans with the Department of Buildings on the occupancy question. We will submit in writing, you know, how the occupancy loads on each of the floors were calculated, and then, if need be, we can have the architect at the follow-up hearing.
Right, I think you should bring the architect, because it answers these kind of questions, they're really architect questions.
So.
But, and, and just to clarify that, we need to know whether the architect actually did meet with DOB, and whether there was some kind of ZRD1 or something like that issued in writing, because when either you comply with the occupancy regulations for the, for the use and the occupancy that are listed in the code?
Yep.
Or you make a presentation to the buildings department, and then the department agrees on which occupancy load to choose.
Understood.
So, so if there was an agreement with DOB about using a different occupancy load, then it should be in writing, right?
Understood, yep. So on the building's first floor, the first through third floors will be used as male prayer hall, and each floor, the floor plate is identical, we'll have an entrance vestibule on that floor, where individuals can either enter from the outside or exit from the elevator or stairwells, and the vestibule is used for members of the congregation to remove their shoes before entering the actual prayer service, the prayer hall, and there's some socialization that goes on before and after prayer services. Then, I believe a question had been raised about the possibility of using a scissor stair in order to increase efficiency. I don't believe a scissor stair is permitted under the building code, we have to have two separate means of egress, and they have to be a significant distance apart, so that is why we have the two stairwells on each side of a building. And then, each floor has small offices, one of the offices is going to be used by the congregation's Imam for preparation of services, one will be used by the congregation's clerical staff, and then the third office is really going to be used to store texts, books, and serve as a meeting room, or meeting office for one-on-one, either religious or personal instruction. So what we can do is add some notes to the plans that just clarify the difference between these spaces.
And in the statement.
Exactly. One, so, some of the issues that have been raised by the community were that there is significant noise, there's pedestrian congestion, and I believe, actually, both of those issues are going to be cured by the proposed new structure. As I had mentioned before, currently congregants on Friday services and the high holidays have to pray outside, speakers are put outside so that they can hear the prayer sermons, that's all going to be brought inside the building now, we will no longer need to have members outside during services, there's also some places inside for socialization before and after prayer services. But I think that's also going to address some issues that members of the public had about pedestrian, pedestrian congestion, without having everybody congregated outside of the space on what is already a rather small property, and they'll all be inside and should alleviate some of the congestion and maneuvering.
About how many people would gather on a Friday night for the biggest service outside?
On Friday, about, uh, outside?
Yeah, so, yeah, it would be, that's right. Please state your name.
Good afternoon, my name is Gorong Gungu, thank you all. It's Friday, we have a two-session noon time, for every session about 120 people, so two sessions, one session finished, they go, then another session comes, about that.
And those 120 are outside, or some of them are inside, some are outside?
Some of them are inside, some of them are outside.
About how much are outside?
About 30, 40 people who are outside, about 80 people who are inside.
So now, you would want to have one session with everybody inside?
Inside, yes.
And just out of curiosity, how does this actually work? You have all, you have three different levels for men, how does, and the Imam is only on one floor, unless you've got a lot of Imams working at the same time?
We, we know, the way a man prays, when he goes down, we go down, when he goes up, we know, when he goes down, by, you know, just hearing it. By hearing this.
Is there a TV screen? Is there a loud speaker system?
We're not using the TV, we're using a microphone, so the recording, we hear from down, you know.
So, because, are there ever, for instance, sermons given, where it's more than just the prayer, but there's a kind of a lecture given that everyone would want to hear? That would be on the speaker system?
The speaker system.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so then, in terms of, that's why I wish the architect was here, but in terms of the sound from the speaker system, because it'll be broadcast on four floors, the issue that people who are walking by, or live next door, or whatever, would hear the speaker from inside, would, could be annoying to neighbors, right? So, we always ask for serious insulation on the windows, so it means a more expensive window, because you're using a higher sound transmission level.
Yeah, we, we consented with architect, we're using some Roxol acoustic insulation, the sound can be mitigated.
Right, so it's not just the insulation in the walls, it's also the thickness, the way the windows are built, it's not really the thickness, it's how they're built?
We'll ask to design that window, the sound can be mitigated. The sound can be mitigated.
Maybe having the architect just josh that and write it to us. I think that would be helpful.
We have talked in other ones that this STC rating is in like the 25 range. No, actually, do I have that back? The STC rating is high and the DBA level is low, right? I think it's like STC 58 or a number like that.
Oftentimes, we get specs on those windows in detail.
Just details in the...
That'd be great.
But there's not going to be any windows adjoining the residential?
No, I'm sure there is.
Right, okay. And then in terms of, so right now, there are 200 people in the congregation, right, in total?
Yes.
That's the current situation. So, when you started in the house that you're currently in, how many congregants did you have when you started, like what was that, in 2005?
When we started, about 75 congregants were there. Now, you know, neighbors getting more people coming in, so there are more congregants.
Okay, so if you calculated, now you have a new building and everyone's so happy because you have a new building and it's going to attract more people, right? Can you project what the actual, say in five years, how many congregants you're going to have?
The growth may be increased by 3% to 5% because density is very low. You cannot make a high-rise building there. So, expectations are very low, that not many people can get into that neighborhood because mostly one, two-family house are there.
So you're expecting to hold at 200 or go to 260?
Maybe 60, 50 would be there.
Okay. So, the building has to be designed to handle it, otherwise you can't have 260, right? So you're, whatever your, this is again a conversation with the architect, the occupancy loads and your desired congregation size has to match. That's regulated by the Buildings Department, right? And then another question, so, do you have more questions about occupancy or anything in that line? No? Okay. So, one of the things that was also with many of the houses of worship, which is what you're experiencing right now from the neighbors, there are complaints about congregants spilling out onto the yards and kind of sort of spilling out onto neighbors' property. So we usually ask for fencing.
We'll put the fencing, our last architect to design fencing also. And we have two security when our, you know, Friday and big holidays, so there are two security guys monitoring it.
And, okay, so that's the other part of it. So you need monitors to make sure that people aren't wandering around on other people's property and also, and we'll get into this, to manage the double and triple parking of cars to the extent that there is that, right?
Yes.
So, and usually with the fencing, because planting is both something that's attractive and it functions as a sound barrier, right?
Yeah.
So that you would also have dense hedging along the two lot lines that are adjacent.
We can use some Dharma foam insulation so sound can be mitigated also.
So there's two things that happen. The fence becomes a sound attenuation fence where there's actually product out there that's specifically for fencing. And then inside of it, you put hedges so that are planted very close to each other so it creates a dense buffer...
Yes.
Between you and your neighbor and it doesn't sound.
Well, to the rear, there's a first floor obstruction.
Oh, yeah, right, there, that...
So you can't go all the way around.
I mentioned yesterday how the cellar ceiling structure comes up to grade, so how are you going to plan things?
So, that's actually a great point, and I raised that to the project architect. And they are looking at solutions as whether they're going to lower portions of the ceiling and of the cellar ceiling in order to provide enough soil for planting.
Right.
So that will be addressed in our follow-up submission.
Okay, that's good. Great.
And one other point that Mr. Kungu was starting to hint at, and I believe addresses some of the issues that have been raised about parking, is that the congregant's membership really serves the immediate neighborhood. And one of the reasons we don't, we expect some modest growth, I think 3% to 5% of the entire congregation, but it is a single and two-family neighborhood and most of the individuals who are members walk to the facility. I believe between 85% to 90% of the congregants walk. And so there is not a high demand for parking. There are certainly some occasionally that are traveling from greater distances or somebody's dropping an elderly person off. But recently, the congregation has hired the two security guards to address the issues that have been raised with us at the Community Board, which were some blocking of driveways and double parking to keep traffic moving through the area. So, we have the two security guards on Friday services, which are the highest attended, and then the high holidays, Ramadan. So, we have those to help keep traffic moving, keep members from interfering or adversely impacting our neighbors. And I think in our follow-up submission, I was just provided with a comprehensive list of all the members and their addresses. So, we're going to create a map that shows essentially the catchment area of the congregation and not identify individual members by address, but pinpoint on that map where these individuals are coming from.
Correct.
Similar to a city planning house of worship parking waiver.
What we've had in the past were an outline of the blocks where they're living.
Yeah, you don't have to show us which is their house.
So that it's just very understood.
Yeah, yeah, we don't want to know which is their house. Okay. Okay, great.
One other question.
And also, the reason that this came up was at another application similar to this one, and it may be different in this case, we were given a little bit of background on what the sort of expectation of prayer is in terms of the walk to prayer. Like that they're actually, in the other case, which may again be completely different type, there was an expectation that prayer and walking are linked, actually. So maybe that doesn't happen here, but if it does, if you could expand on that, okay?
Yes, and I think also, Chair, you had pointed out in one paragraph, the differing times of the services. And you're correct, they vary based on season, they vary based on sunset, and one set of times wasn't updated or updated, statement of facts will reflect that.
Right, yeah. You could just give a range. You can say, you know, in summer months, it's from this and to this period, and that gives us an idea of when people would be coming. Okay.
Is there any plan to use the roof for any purpose?
There is no plan to use the roof, other than get up there for maintenance.
Okay, so, I'm not sure, I'm not, if you need two means of egress to the roof?
I think that's, the fire department requires a staircase to always go to the roof for the fire department to...
There's two though.
With ladders. No, because the people may be egressing because the fire's on the first floor, they may egress to the roof.
Because I know the person to the rear sent us a letter saying that they're concerned about the height and how it's going to change their light. So, I noticed that the rear stairway bulkhead, I believe, is twice as wide as it needs to be, because it's like you have another stair going up further.
I'll have the architect look at both of those issues, whether we need to extend the bulkhead to, you know, world level.
Those bulkheads, yeah.
And the socks.
Right.
And also, you know, I actually don't know if we see the bulkhead expressed fully, right? So, you know, the, yeah, it is actually. So, the bulkhead could be reduced in mass because you don't actually need it to be a big block and be following the slope of the staircase. So maybe there's a way to reduce that back bulkhead. And then the one that holds up the dome, that's just support for the dome, that's not a bulkhead. Actually, both bulkheads could probably be reduced. You know, that's the other thing we sometimes see where the, there's no advantage taken in the bulkhead as part of a design element. That bulk, both, that bulkhead, actually, both bulkheads, the elevator and the stair come to the front of the building and they're not revealed in any kind of design element, so it's just going to be this box on the front. Meanwhile, there's so much control with the minarets, you would think that this would become part of the design feature. I think the architect should look more carefully at how the clarity of the minarets are going to be ruined by being adjacent to bulkheads or competing with bulkheads.
And can you put the measurements on the plans of all of the permitted obstructions?
Exactly. So, in addition to that, I think a question was, we wanted the height and setback diagram shown...
Yes.
On the section drawing and the elevation, essentially, we're permitted three stories or 35 feet at the front yard line, at which point the sky exposure plane takes over. Our entire building height is below that maximum permitted.
To the roof, but not to the dome and the...
Correct, and those are permitted obstructions.
Careful, so we, on the last one, we found out that the Department of Buildings does not consider a dome, don't know why, a permitted obstruction like a steeple. And since we don't want to split hairs about whether a minaret is a steeple and you're here before the BSA, I would just put the whole thing in, right? That the minaret and the domes are, may not be permitted obstructions therefore, right?
I think they can be part of the waiver.
Yeah.
It's just simpler to do it.
Because they had in the other project a problem with the dome.
Okay, so just to clarify, the minarets, the dome are not permitted obstruction, so...
Yeah, for instance, we're not going to treat them as permitted obstructions, we'll treat them as something that gets waived by the height and setback regulations. That'll make it easier for you at DOB.
So it's if permitted by DOB or if approved by DOB?
No.
No, no, no. We already know that the dome, they don't consider a permitted obstruction. They had that problem at the last application.
That was a Queens project too.
Yeah, right. And the minaret, that building didn't have a minaret, so actually, we didn't...
Yeah, we didn't have to address that.
Find out whether that's also a steeple, though you would think it's a steeple.
Yeah, I think it should be a permitted obstruction.
Yeah, well...
No, I think they already have a height objection, right?
No.
Yeah, they have, you have, you don't have a height objection.
We do not. Right now, we have our yard waivers.
Well, so, you, so here's, so here's the thing. Because you would need an objection for this, and we also want to know for sure what your occupancy rate is, maybe that's an opportunity to go to DOB and clarify once and for all in writing what the occupancy class is for the...
And if they consider those elements, permitted obstructions, that's fine too. We're fine with that.
Yeah, it's just that we had that experience and it delayed that project by a while.
I appreciate that being pointed out now because I don't want to have to deal with it later.
Yeah, exactly.
Also, in addition to the height and setback diagrams, which we will label accordingly based on our DOB meetings, I know some requests were made for exterior finishing details. We'll add those notes to the plan. Just for your knowledge, it's going to be essentially a slab rock exterior your face with stucco around the windows. But we'll have those materials actually added to the...
So it's going to be an actual stone facing?
Yeah, stone facing. It may not be like an actual thick stone versus just a veneer, but...
Just checking it's not one of those styrofoam things.
No.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
No styrofoam on a mosque.
I have a question, are there separate men's and women's entrances?
No.
Oh, there are?
No, they are able to come through the second entrance. Women are able to use the elevator, they just prayers have to be separate.
And then this is more for my education because there are so many different ways of interpreting mosques. There's no area for foot washing. Is that not something that's part of the...
Isn't that downstairs?
Downstairs.
Yeah.
There's an pollution room in the...
In the cellar? Oh, there is? Okay.
Similar to where we've seen it before.
Yeah, no, okay, we saw it split, I think, on one. So, okay, and then, what was my other question? I guess, I can't remember. Okay. Let's see, are there any other...
I have questions about the plans and in terms of the as of right and the lesser variance, that cellar in both of those should be the same as the cellar in your proposed and then correct your numbers in your statement to make that.
Yep, I got that comment, that's been communicated to the architect.
Okay, I think, any other question, comments?
I just wanted to, there was a discussion yesterday about sort of tightening up some of the rooms, but what I heard from this testimony was that the vestibule actually serves as the purpose that is sort of essential to the program, so I...
Right. And I also have to say that it seems that by, say, designing the building or being so flexible in the design that prayer rooms could be on multi floors, we don't see that that often, right? And what that's enabling is what I think of as a much more sensitive design to the neighborhood because it's pulling back on yards, even though it's not complying, it's still pulling back on yards where we often see no provision for a yard. So the idea of being willing to have multiple levels and that still works programmatically, I think, is really great and sensitive. Okay. Are there any speakers on this? No? So, okay.
Yeah, they have a pretty clear sense of what you guys need to do. I don't know how long it takes. Yesterday, we're comprehensive and we're already started addressing most of them.
Oh, oh, sorry, left out one thing, sorry.
Sure.
There was one of the complaints was about the current operations where there's trash issues.
Oh, right.
And so, you do have a kitchen and trash is a big issue a lot of the times on these kinds of houses of worship. So, to the extent that there is going to be catering and there's an issue with trash, it's one of two things. If there's going to be catering, therefore food waste, then we need a refrigerated interior trash storage area. If the, if the kind of trash is more whatever, then it just needs to be an interior trash storage area and trash only comes out right before pickup, which is by sanitation, right?
It will be enclosed area, so it will not get exposed.
Okay, so it'll be on the interior of the building and it's only brought out right before pickup, whichever days of the week that is, right? Okay.
So you have a trash room?
Yeah, and we'll make sure that on any revised plans, that that is clearly delineated.
But just to be clear, so in that room, in the cellar, the room that functions as a multipurpose room, is food served sometimes for events?
Yes.
Okay, so then how does that work? Is the food prepared on site or is it catered?
Food prepares in that building sometime, not much, a little bit, and then it serves in the cellars.
And then it's served in the cellar there, okay. So because food is prepared on site, that's where the trash disposal is a problem because the food sits there, just develops its own life. So that's why we want a refrigerated trash storage area. So, what you could do is, there are calculations where you can figure based on your own experience right now, how much trash you generate, and you can calculate how big of a refrigeration room you need. It can be something quite small because often it's compacted, right? So, but there is an official method of calculating that, which you need to do, okay? Based on the number of participants at an event. Okay? What are we saying then? How much time? I don't see, do we have any room on July 25?
Uh... 17 cases we can put this on.
Okay, July, and that's including the ones you added?
Yes.
Okay, July 25 then, if that's enough time, would be a submission on July 5? Not sure if you're doing anything.
I will be away, but I'll ensure it's done beforehand.
Okay, so that only gives you basically a month and a little bit to respond. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, you're speaking on behalf of the architect who's not here.
We'll make sure it's enough for him.
Okay. All right, good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Excellent.
Bye, take care. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Item number four, 2016, 4251 B.C., 626 Sheepset Bay Road, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ethan Goodman with Fox Rothschild, representing Neptune South Commercial LLC. A couple of lost to the boards. So, yeah, we're here for a 7344 parking reduction. We attended review session yesterday, heard a few of your comments. In addition, we attended review session last time around when we adjourned it and you had some comments. We responded to all those in writing. I think one of your comments was, had a little bit to do with what uses are in this building and how we did the parking, as well as sort of two buildings versus one building. I think maybe it's worth just taking a quick walk through what the project is and how it comes together. So it's 109,000 square foot, a seven-story building. The second story is parking entirely, so it's six stories of floor area. You'll see in the picture that you'll have the main seven-story building. And then there's what looks like a wing, which is that one-story wing. It's retail with parking on the roof. It's a roof of a basement. That wing is a separate, it's a separate tax lot, it is a separate zoning lot and it is a separate building. And the reason for that originates about, I don't know, probably about a year and a half ago. The applicant owns 626 Sheepset Bay, which is Lot 8, where the seven-story building is going. The applicant does not own Lot 1. The applicant is under a long-term 49-year lease for Lot 1. Because of that, the Department of Buildings insisted that this would be built as two separate buildings, not one building. And so they wanted us to build two buildings. So we had to meet certain requirements for two buildings. We were allowed by the DOB to share some systems and services, to not share all systems and services. Specifically, loading is provided off of West 8th Street on the one-story portion. The parking egress and access is through a ramp on the seven-story portion into both the one-story roof and the second story of the seven stories. Gas service and HVAC is provided in the seven-story building on the rooftop and with a shared meter room in the basement. All of these are documented via easements between the two buildings that are in perpetuity and make sure that these systems have to be shared. There are, oh, and finally, a party wall. There's a party wall. It's a firewall between the two buildings that split up the two buildings.
How does the firewall split up the two buildings?
It's a shared firewall right at the first floor. It's right here. Just on the first floor?
What about the second floor?
No, there's only one floor on this building, right?
The basement? The basement?
Yeah. It goes, right. It goes all the way, all the way down. There's a very limited basement, it's about 3,000 square feet and it's predominantly in this building. I don't think there's actually much excavation in the basement of this building. And so the wall is separating the two and we're limited to the permitted openings between the two.
But so this thing that's on top of the basement level, which would be considered the roof?
Sorry, yes. There is a basement. The first floor from grade is a basement because it is slightly below the mean curve.
And DOB is treating the floor above the basement where the parking sits as a roof?
Well, it's only a roof because it's, the top of every building's a roof. But you are allowed to park on the roof because you're parking on a basement roof.
Right. But so I'm still in the, what about the firewall between the roof of the building? There's always a parapet wall where the party wall continues up and functions as a fire stop from one building to the other. That's the part I'm not understanding.
You're talking about, how do you treat the rooftop separation in the parking facility? I can let the architect comment on that. I don't know the specific on that one.
Please state your name for the record?
Yes. Hello, my name is Haik Arustamian. And by code, because of the type of construction, that party wall, we're allowed to stop under...
Could you move closer to the mic?
There's an exception in the code where we can stop the firewall under the roof.
What, can you tell us what that is?
I don't know.
Can you give Council a copy of that?
Yes.
Yeah. Very confusing. I'm looking for the definition of building and I'm pretty sure it has nothing to do with ownership.
No, the definition of building does not. We would actually, might have preferred to have it be one building. DOB did not, would not, that was not an acceptable situation.
Based on ownership?
Based on ownership. The idea is, once the 49-year lease runs out on half of a building, if they were to call it one building, then they've got a situation where you've got, you've got one, basically, I mean, look, it derives from the fact that they don't let you merge the tax lot into one tax lot because it's multiple different owners. And they don't want to have a building span across tax lot lines.
The definition of a building says it's bounded by open area or firewalls.
Mm-hmm. And it is. It's the rooftop that, right, the edge of the roof doesn't have a wall that's separating the two from the other building. But the building itself, the one-story of that building, is indeed separated by a firewall.
So it's really interesting because, I mean, I don't know how relevant it is. Assessors will initiate a merger when it appears as if one building is going across two tax lots and they don't even check ownership. They just automatically process a merger application.
Which affirms the fact that they would not allow us to build one building across two tax lots.
Right.
They would also not let us merge these tax lots because of the ownership situation where we did not own in perpetuity the one-story structure.
But I think to Commissioner Otley Brown's point, an assessor walking in the neighborhood will say, oh, look, there's one building on this lot. There is nothing for you to use to say this is two buildings because when I drive to park, I'm going over there and I'm parking over there.
Sure. But it's all documented through DOB. There is two separate building permits, it's two separate CFOs, it's two separate, it's two separate sign-offs. There are cross-easements that explain all the shared services.
Right. And I'm just not sure that the assessors are actually getting that information. That's all I'm saying, is that, that's why I'm really puzzled by this because the assessor is just going to process a merger. They're going to initiate a merger because it's finance policy, at least it used to be finance policy, that you could not have one building spanning two tax lots and what will appear to them to be one building because it has one access to the parking. And so they're not going to, they're not going to investigate the ownership situation. That's my thought. But that's not, I mean, it's not something of...
We should be aware of that, certainly.
Yeah. Just be aware of it because I think it's something probably that buildings and finance have to talk about because it seems like they both have different policies that are going to clash in certain situations.
Good to know.
Okay. All right. Super confusing and weird. All right.
So that was with respect to the concept of one building versus two. Also, a question came up as to this use group for a community facility space, right?
Could I ask one more question regarding the building on Lot 1? It seems that you have different clearances to the parapet wall that you don't have on the other lot. Is there a reason for that?
Clearances, I'm not sure I fully understand.
There's a six-foot clearance to the parapet wall along the main, I forget the name of that street.
Yeah, this is west, so we have West Days and Sheepset Bay Road.
Right. Both of those streets have a separation between where the parking is allowed and the parapet wall. But there is no separation on the other lot.
I'll see if the architect understands it better than I do.
What's the question?
I'm looking at Parking Floor Plan 6 of 14. The sheet?
Yes.
And if you look at Lot 1, you have these six-foot...
Right. Because they're facing street and this is adjacent property, so this articulated fence.
Can you, sorry, can you take the mic with you? Otherwise, the speakers can't hear you.
So these fences are screening the parking from the street. And on the back along this, you only have this adjacent building, so therefore it's just a regular parapet.
But I think she's asking...
Yeah. But how come you don't have to, you know, continue that six-foot separation from the parapet wall along the rest of the parking lot?
Well, it's continuing from, it's facing the two streets.
Not according to your plans. I just thought it looked like there was something different about the parking layout on Lot 1.
That's because it's a fire department access. It's only required from the street. That's, yeah, it's a required, there's a fire department access requirements we have to provide them straight. There is a landing space where the...
And then there's a route.
Right. There is a road in between, yes.
Okay. That, okay. Thank you. Sorry.
It's okay. Yeah, I could talk a little bit about community facility use. And this ties into the parking demand study. Our parking traffic consultant, environmental consultant, Philip Habib, from Philip Habib Associates is here. But just to give you a brief overview. So the way the uses break down on the site, this is a site, it's a C82 and it's a 4.8 FAR, maximum FAR for community facility use. It is a 2 FAR maximum for commercial uses. And so the way the site breaks down is there is essentially one floor of retail use, one, a little bit more than one floor of commercial office use, totaling that to FAR. Anything above and beyond that must be a use group for community facility use because obviously we don't have the FAR. The way those, that community facility use breaks down is a certain portion of that is another one floor is ambulatory care, which has a certain parking ratio. And the remainder, which is two floors at about 36,000 square feet, is a use group for a, you know, our drawings call it a use group for a community facility, not-for-profit without sleeping accommodations use. It may indeed, it is most likely to be that in the end. There are a number of uses in foray that are community facility uses that have the same parking requirement, parking ratio of one space per 20 rated capacity. So while based on the tenants we're talking to, it's most likely to be a use group for a not-for-profit without sleeping accommodations. There are other uses such as community centers, welfare centers, clubs, recreation centers that in theory it could be without changing any parking requirement. For the purposes of the traffic analysis or the parking demand study, the use group for a text for not-for-profit without sleeping does allow a certain portion of that square footage to be used for central office functions. What you would typically find elsewhere in a typical office, cubicles, people office. And the idea was that DOB wanted to prevent you from just having a not-for-profit, but just having their back offices be located in place. They said, that's not not-for-profit, that's office. There is a standard in that section that does cap it at 25,000 square feet. We believe the, sort of, the way DOB is most likely to review that is that this back office function, which indeed is limited to 25,000 or 50 people, it is intended to be viewed as essentially accessory to the not-for-profit service providing space, the community facility. And therefore, we think it would be more likely that they would see, they would want to see a space that has some central office to be predominantly not-for-profit service providing space, not office. So that's why initially in the review, we split it up 50/50. We have 37,000 square foot of this community facility, not-for-profit without sleeping. And we split it up into about, it's about 18 and 18. 18 more traditional office, which generates more trips, and 18 of the service providing space. Upon response to some comments from the board, we upped that to the full 25,000 square feet of space. Because, well, look, if DOB allowed you to go to the full 25, then maybe in theory you could. That increased the parking demand. We still have about a 15-space buffer, but now we have that 38,000 square feet of space. We've matched out the quote-unquote "office," or the not-quote-unquote "office." And the residual is essentially a community center, 13,000 square feet, which has a much lower parking demand.
Okay. But so, this mysterious not-for-profit without sleeping accommodations, there are so many different kinds, many of which do what they do effectively with office space, which is not administrative space. It's where, for instance, the caseworkers sit when they're meeting with clients because they're social workers and that's not the same thing as ambulatory diagnostic, right? So they have as many cubicles as you might have if it were all administrative office. So we don't, at this point, that's why we kept asking what kind of a not-for-profit without sleeping accommodations because so far, all I'm imagining, unless it's a not-for-profit dance company or a not-for-profit museum, I'm trying to imagine what else would go on there where they're not effectively offices.
Uh-huh. So obviously, you're right. Wide variety of not-for-profit, wide variety of service providers. Some, let me just, I'll toss out a few of the, and I don't, there are no leases signed, but a few of the types of uses that have shown interest and that there have been discussions around. There have been discussions around uses such as adult daycare uses that would not be ambulatory treatment facilities, food stamp administration offices and service providing. So in a lot of these cases, yes, you've got offices, but you've also got central areas where people are sort of in the front area, after-school programs, things like that. Some discussions with the State Office of People with Developmental Disabilities, right, as a service providing center for them. I think all these uses certainly do have a certain degree of officey-type uses, but they'd also have a good amount of uses where people would come into the front door, central areas where you wait, areas where people, yes, in some instances, you come back to the provider's office cubicle and some areas, it's a separate area where you go sit, you go and sit and you have a consultation that's in sort of a separate area. I don't think, well, you know, it's, I don't want to speak on behalf of DOB, but I think the concept of, in that area of, was central office functions being the 25, limit to 25,000, is that they didn't want to see a floor plan that looked like an office, a straight-up office. There needed to be, I am anticipating that these would have to be consultation areas, would have to be consultation rooms, would have to be waiting rooms, things like that. We think the study as it was done currently, again, it's two-thirds office and there's one-third of the space that's remaining that is, was viewed as non-office.
Right. But so we, so we were looking at like the reasonable worst-case scenario kind of idea. So if we just assumed, and most of the time that we get these applications, of which we see quite a lot, it's a combination of two uses. It's ambulatory care and standard use group 6A offices. And they're both, the traffic and parking is run based on those two uses. And we don't know, you know, ambulatory care, which is a very high traffic, parking demand or traffic demand use, the office space, use group 6B office space could easily be also doctor's offices because they're professional offices, right? So that ambulatory care actually could have expanded throughout the building, but we don't ask for that worst-case scenario to be run because maybe it becomes law offices, right? So in this situation, if we just sort of assume the same kind of a mix, offices and ambulatory care, then at least we'll have taken it to a reasonable worst case as opposed to an expectation of some type of function in your not-for-profit that is, you know, for instance, if you were doing an after-school program, you potentially have hundreds of kids coming in, all arriving in buses and I don't know what. But we don't need to look at every single possibility, just one that's reasonable, right? So that's why I'm thinking, based on our discussions, that the numbers should be run assuming the entire not-for-profit space is an office. That'll increase slightly, I think, your demand, but I don't think it'll exceed what you're providing. It'll just make us feel like, at least, it's not such an unknown in that not-for-profit area.
So even, and in the end, it may be semantics because I don't think it, I think we would still be under the number spots we're providing. It would seem a little odd to take the entire 36,000 and treat it exactly the same as an office because you would say there is an interaction with the public that would require at least some of the space to, it can't all be office, just like a law office. I mean, some of it has to be receiving area and waiting area and things like that.
Offices have conference centers, so you can't compare it to a law firm. As you know, whole floors devoted only to a few, to conference rooms where 12 people sit and eat a lot of food. So...
Look, I think we can run that analysis. I don't, I think we've done a preliminary look. And just looking at the chart as to what, how much each use generates, back of the envelope would seem to indicate we'd still be okay if we ran that up to 13,000 as in office-type use, yes.
Right. Okay. Good. All right. And then I think, since you need to do that, there was also a question about the lighting?
Yes. Yes. And so there's, I guess, two components of lighting. The image on the left might show you that sort of the open rooftop a little bit better. So this headline... So there's headlights, and there's lighting of the deck, right? The headlights, we have a six-foot aluminum screen. It's an angled slatted screen, and you see them on other garages. It's intended so that perpendicular lights do not emerge from it, and the biggest concern is, obviously, yes, on the right, the residence is there. So it's that western frontage there. It's angled slatted all around to prevent headlights. As far as the lighting of the actual deck, the lighting that's proposed is merely downlighting on the two bulkheads. I'll just point them out right here. So there's a bulkhead here and a bulkhead here. There would be affixed to that bulkhead itself, there would be downlighting, LED downlighting that would be buffered on the side, so it's not unconstrained moving outward. We have a spec sheet on that. We can provide that. And that's, yeah, it's a very subtle lighting scheme.
Okay. So if you could show the lighting on the plans, and then also provide the spec sheet?
We'll do it. Yep.
All right. Are there any speakers on this? Okay. So, I think we're talking July 20, whatever we said, 25th, right?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So then, I think we could, ideally, as long as the numbers work with the parking, we could put this on for July 25, and we could do a decision on that date as well, assuming everything works.
Great. With the submission date of...
With the submission date of July 5.
Okay. That works.
Okay.
Good. Thank you very much.
This concludes the public hearing for July, May 23, 2017.